nuisance officer. Once we issue them a citation, they then have a preliminary court date scheduled before the our officer who handles court situations, they're not the normal county court, it's our municipal officer. And it typically takes somewhere around a month to get before him. So you've got that typically right now, we're waiting a number of weeks until we see it. Then you've gotten a letter, we give you another 10 days, we send you one more letter. And now that you've received a citation, we have to wait about a month to be able to get before the court. That first purpose of that preliminary hearing is simply for people to say whether they are pleading guilty, whether they're pleading not guilty, or they want to have a conversation. If they plead not guilty, then we have to go to another hearing, which is at least another 30 days out, simply based on the court's schedule, the hearing officer. And so during that time, again, nothing's happening, we don't have the ability to enforce anything. Sometimes we're successful at that time where they realize that they're going to have to pay the citation, where we may get some face time with somebody. We had a situation just last week that we went, it was for a dog issue, a dog running at large, which is also under our nuisance abatement. The people didn't show up at all, but they still have an opportunity to have a hearing scheduled. But if they show up, we obviously have an easier time of trying to have a conversation with them and hopefully can get some compliance with them.
So what's all that?
Yes. So we don't do that easily. We are always getting advice from our city attorney. She's the one that has to defend us on the judicial side. We've heard people say, we should just go on people's property. We have to comply, we don't have to. The city council could choose to ignore their legal advice that they receive from Bree Sorenson, our city attorney out of Shenandoah. Her position is that there's three branches of government, and they are the legislative branch, the mayor and I are the administrative branch. And Bree does not suggest that we go and take legislative authority without judicial involvement, which means that the court says, we now give you permission, we've seen you go through the third branch of government, and that you now have permission to go on that property and take it. So that's what the judge would be deciding. So when we get through all those steps, we obviously have an employee who's spending their time doing it, which we employ, and that's why he's there. But then there's also legal fees. Typically, the top end of a citation is $750. If it's a first offense, the judge is not likely to issue that amount of a citation. We had a very serious case where it was $250. Then, once the person was found guilty, we had to give them another 10 days to clean it up. Then, once the 10 days had passed and they didn't clean it up, we then had to go back with the attorney, pay her again to go to the judge and have him finally order the issue. So when you look at that, typically, it's 90 to 120 days. Now, you can say that you think we should just go, we have a right. One of the things that we heard was that other cities just do it more aggressively. We have the same code. Technically, the code says, we can come and abate you. But our attorney says, if there's a garbage bag, if there's stuff, and we just simply come and take it, she feels that that's an overreach of government without judicial involvement. So that's what the council has chosen to do. And so it's typically at least $1,000 in attorney fees for a citation of $750. In extreme cases, which we had one since I've been here, the garbage bill was $3,500, plus the citation. So the citation itself doesn't get us any of that money, a part of Bree, the attorney's money, that we can get paid back. But if you take all those things where the council is saying that should all of you have to pay for that. Now, in the case of past years, we were not as aggressive as we could have been to get those bills put on the tax roll, and I promise you that they will be on the tax roll now. But as we issue the tax roll for the abatement costs, we send it to the county in May, and then, as you know, tax bills come out and you pay in September and March. So they would then be, you know, we were dealing with this back in November, this case. So we have attorney bills, which we cannot recoup. The only thing that helps pay the attorney bills back are the citation amount. So if we have $1,000 in court costs with the attorney, and the citation that the court issues is $250, all of you pay $750 that is not recouped. On top of, we have to wait to see if they pay their taxes. Obviously, eventually, that could go for a tax sale, but that doesn't happen immediately. And so while it seems easy to say that we have this nuisance abatement process, we're not ignoring it. We do do it, but the council does not feel like that's the only way that we should use that. And again, we've chosen to say that we're just not going to go. And I, one of the petition people sent me that email, like I said, they talked about Atlantic in Boone, Iowa. I sent it to our city attorney, and she found it ironic that she said, people who are against the petition, excuse me, are signing the petition against garbage, feel like we should not be in your business, that we should not be able to tell you what to do. And so you're saying governments stay out. But what she found ironic from her legal perspective is that when you flip the coin to the person that you think is a violator, you're okay right now with us going on your property and taking that person's stuff. And she found that to be sort of contrary to the two sides, that you don't want government in your business because you're saying, please don't do this, but you're okay without a judge saying that we can go on that property. So she said, if the council wants to, you can certainly, on the day after that we warn them that we're coming, that we can go and take it. Our code does say that. But she finds that to be a huge liability and does not advise us to do that. So that's what the council has chosen as our policy, to wait until we've gone to court.
Thank you. This is a question, Lisa, I think you've answered previously, but I, it's on here. What if you can't pay your entire bill and just pay the water to keep it on? Is that an option, or is it all or nothing?
Again, you don't get to choose which portion of your bills you pay for. So if you short paid us, there would be a disconnection.
Thank you. This is for anyone, this is new tonight. What if a resident pays the water bill every month and doesn't use the hauler?
Again, it's just like there is for $2.90 for recycling. If the council were to go the route of curbside garbage, you have the right to use it, and if you choose not to, there's not an opt-out for the service.
Thank you. A new one also this evening. Paying out a contract and these people don't pay their bill. How long does it take to recoup this money if it is placed on their tax bill? It appears to me that the city is opening themselves up to debt.
So do you think they mean the individual bills? Read that one more time, please.
Paying out a contract and these people don't pay their bill. How long does it take to recoup this money if it is placed on their tax bill? It appears to me that the city is opening themselves up to debt.
So obviously, I think they mean, whoever wrote that, that you mean that we're paying the hauler regardless of whether people pay. Again, because we have the ability to turn off your water. Typically, we get attention from people that don't have water. The ones that typically don't pay attention are when you have a vacant home, when somebody's moved out. And so certainly, the possibility exists that we've turned people's water off. If it became long-term, we obviously also, through our staff, pay attention to vacant properties. And if we really believed that a property had been abandoned, we could certainly work with the haulers and then turn off the service. As we said, if someone's actually living there and choosing to not pay their water bill, it's not our intention to turn it off. But the longer-term ones tend to be vacant properties, and we could certainly have that as an option because they say they can keep track of vacant properties.
Okay, thank you. They also received questions that are really meant for Lynette, Kevin, and Alex to answer this evening. So they're all the same questions. So I'm just one at a time, gonna come to you.
I do think Lynette has two answers. Because of her being in town.
Yeah, and none of them is not the same.
I think you have two answers.
Yeah. Well, they're similar.
It's not actually, it's not the same.
How much does Batten pay, are you gonna?
You're gonna go first.
Okay. How much does Batten pay in Montgomery County? Into Montgomery County?
I don't understand that question, I guess. What are you, what are you saying?
I don't believe, I don't know for sure either, but I would think it's some sort of form of taxes. So whether that's property taxes, I believe you pay sales tax in the county, again, we write the questions, so.
I was at the dentist when I got this information. I have no idea. I know, we donate, we do everything we can, we pay to Precision Diesel for all our repairs, which is costly. We, we have, oh, sorry, we have all kinds of things that we pay into this county. I, I don't have a number, like I said.
Again, as we explained to all three haulers, we didn't make the questions.
Okay.
But in transparency, we felt like we should at least have someone here that we asked you, and they have a right to not answer, or if you don't know.
Okay, yeah, okay. I, I just really can't answer that.
Okay.
I know a lot.
Sure.
Lot.
Is there an underlying reason why Batten won't work with the city?
That is not a fact.
Can you talk into the mic?
Talk into the mic.
That is not a fact? No. Yeah? No. There is not an underlying reason why we didn't, other than we have done it our way for 42 years. That kind of makes it a, kind of a way where we still want to do it our way. It's not that we don't want to work with the city, it's just that we don't know any other way. Be honest, that's the way it is.
Okay, thank you. How many Red Oak residents are employed by Batten?
I really don't think that is, has anything to do with anything, but I do have six.
Okay.
I don't think that has anything to do with anything, but.
Yeah.
I did it again?
Yeah. We want to hear your beautiful voice.
I tried to call my mouth, obviously.
Okay, what? And again, these questions do not have to be answered. But they were proposed to City Hall through the process for this evening. What benefits does Batten offer their employees?
I have no comment on that one. That is nobody's business but ours.
Last, well, no, I've got one more. If we don't get curbside recycling, can we at least get something written into the recycling contract that the bins are emptied regularly? They are full almost every time I go.
We empty those four to five times a week. They cost us $100 each time we empty them, plus, plus $75 a ton. That's on top of the $100 per load. We, we do our best to make sure, but sometimes on the weekends, they hit us. That's what happens. And that's, if you, if you, if you hold off and don't stockpile, and if you hold off and not take it on the weekends necessarily, a big pie, a big amount, we, I don't think you'll have a problem. Because like I say, we try, I swear to you, we take four to five times a week.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So Lynette.
Oh. Okay.
I hate talking to these things. Anyway, so do you think if we had curbside, that it might reduce the amount of traffic at the recycle?
You're asking the wrong person.
And, well, you haul them. And, and I guess part of my question, it's a two-part question. Do you think that some of the stuff that gets put in those bins is actually just refuse and not recycle?
That's, sure, that's a possibility. I, I know it is, yeah. We have a guy here in town that wants to go around and collect for people, but, and I don't, and take it down to those containers. I have no problem with that. He's called ROC, I think it is.
To add to your defense on that, I will say that there's no way to police those bins.
Yeah, exactly.
And only city residents are paying for that. So if you see somebody there, you know, who not living in town and have a water bill, it's not be letting them use those bins because people are coming from outside our community to put stuff in there, and they are not paying for that.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, you can't police it. But what I'm saying is that.
I agree.
If somebody's complaining they're full all the time, well, that's not Lynette's fault, and that's certainly not anybody else's fault.
Right.
But if people, again, are coming from who knows how far away.
Somebody needs to advertise that maybe, and put that out there.
And you can't have somebody standing there the entire time.
I agree, yes. And I don't, cameras wouldn't do any good either, either. But, I mean, I, I would, I don't know what the answer is to that, but yeah, I, it's.
Why can't we not do it in the city's parking lot?
I don't know.
I asked why could we not put those in the city's parking lot?
I was happy with that. I'd have been more than happy with that. That would have been easier for us to control, to watch, and for everybody.
Where do you mean, city's law? Like, what do you mean by?
But I think somebody bought that property, didn't they?
I'd be the one by the city hall, too.
Didn't O'Neill buy that? Did O'Neill buy that property, that, part of that property?
It's our side, but we own the two.
Yeah.
I don't think there'd be an agreement.
I don't know.
We take two rows during the day.
Oh, no. No, they gotta be able to back up.
I think that was probably.
All right, so one more question for Lynette, and then I'm picking on Kevin. If our haulers don't get the, if, if our haulers don't get to keep Red Oak's business, are they going to have enough customers to take care of the rural people, residents? So if you don't get the Red Oak local business, would you?
Residential?
Right, the local, city, within-city limits business, if you don't get that, do you have enough business in the rural area to keep going?
No. We, we stick strictly to Red Oak. We, we stick strictly to Red Oak. We have, we don't do out-of-town. We have our commercial accounts and our roll-off accounts, but that is not going to keep, that is not, and eventually, if the big corporation comes in, they're going to take us out all the way.
Okay. Kevin, you get to hold that one.
My hands are sweaty.
Well.
I'm glad I got first.
That's, that's the reason why I'm not giving you mine. All right, so I'm gonna start with the question that we just ended there with Lynette. If, if you, if Town and Country does not keep the Red Oak city business, do you have enough in the rural area to keep you going? Again, you don't have to answer these, these were submitted.
I didn't get that one.
I know, it was just tonight.
Oh, is this all?
It is.
Yeah.
Close your mouth.
Yeah. I do, I guess Brian and I have something in common, I don't like talking to these things We would take a substantial hit, but yes, we do, this is probably a little over half of our accounts, but we do service, you know, Maleska Stanton, Grant, Griswold Lewis, a, a ton of rural areas. But yeah, as far as a hit, it would be a large hit. I would lose, I would have to get rid of two employees, and, and I'd probably have to go back to work, and I would really not be interested in that.
I'm not here to comment on any of these, so. All right, Kevin, we are going to ask you some of the questions, some that were similar to Lynette's. How much does Town and Country pay into Montgomery County?
Again, that's a, kind of, these questions, in my opinion, don't have anything to do with the mandatory trash, but here we go. And I'm kind of guessing on what they really mean. We do not own property in Montgomery County. We pay local option sales tax, we pay the landfill, if that was a direction out there that we, there. Our bill is roughly anywhere from $9,000 to $13,000. It can vary, you know, $1,000 a month, $9,000 to $13,000 a month. Our guys, when they're in town, we, you know, they go out to eat, they grab stuff at the convenience stores, you know, if we have a tire go down, we use, you know, we get it fixed down here. So yeah, we spend, it's kind of a general question, I guess, we, we spend money down here, whether it's a school, we're a member, we've, you know, we've got a banner hanging on the wall in here, chamber members, you name it, the school, anything.
Donations.
Yeah, the donations and stuff like that. So that, to me, was kind of a, I'm kind of flopping right around, I, it was kind of a tricky question, and it really didn't make sense to me, but yeah, there you go.
Okay. How many Red Oak city residents are employed by Town and Country?
At this time, one. Because I have one move to Council boss.
Okay. And again, this is only if you want to answer this. What benefits does Town and Country offer their employees?
Again, I agree with Lynette on this. It's really nobody's business, but I guess, you know, I'll answer it. Full-time employees are paid salary, part-time are paid hourly. They get free trash service, they have a clothing allowance, they get meals, they're paid sick days, paid time off. They choose if they want, or they choose what to manage their paid time off, I'm going to die right there, how they want to manage their time off for holidays, birthdays. We pay, obviously, state and federal withholding. We offer an IRA, a match program, and probably numerous other things, but as far as benefits, if that's what they're after, no, we do not have like a large health insurance or whatever. So again, nothing to do with weekly trash service.
Okay. Last question for you, and then you can go back and hide where you were. Is your company willing to provide curbside recycling service at this time?
No, not at this time. I have no, no experience in it, I have no equipment for it, and again, I don't know anything about it. So, I mean, obviously, nothing is ever out of the question, but, you know, not at this time.
You, you passed, thank you. Alex, come on down. I'm good, how are you? All right, Alex is representing Shenandoah Sanitation this evening, so got some questions for you that were sent in, and the same. If it's something you're not comfortable answering, I'm putting you on the spot, but I'm not putting you on the spot. Does that seem fair to say? Okay. And speaking here.
Here.
Yeah. A little closer.
Here. There we go.
And then you'll sing the National Anthem when you're done.
Nobody wants to hear that.
Okay. How much does Shenandoah Sanitation pay into Montgomery County?
Yeah, similar to Batten and Town and Country on this, I don't really know off the top of my head, so kind of went on the tax thing, it's public knowledge. Waste Connection's paid about $15,500 last year in taxes here in Red Oak. And then I didn't know where else to go with this, so I kind of went back and looked at last year. We donated about just under $20,000 last year to the communities that we service out of Shenandoah, so that includes Sidney, Shenandoah, several other communities that we service, but I mean, that's going towards any sort of community events, high school fundraising, anything of that, of that nature, so.
Okay. How many Red Oak city residents are employed by Shenandoah Sanitation?
Yeah. So I had to look it up, but we do have seven employees that reside here in Red Oak full-time.
Okay. What benefits does Shenandoah Sanitation offer their employees?
Yeah, again, on this, I, you know, it's public knowledge, you guys can just kind of see, it's all on our websites, but we offer a 401K with a, with a match. We have full health and benefits for all of our full-time employees. There's annual and quarterly bonus hits for, for all of our employees, there's paid time off, we provide all PPE uniforms, anything that they need for their job, we provide for them. There's a dozen other things that we could come up with, but I mean, that's just kind of the highlights.
Okay. Are you willing to provide curbside recycling?
Yes.
All right, and I think this last question isn't one for you to answer, I think it's for the council, so you passed.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Okay, in a previous radio interview, and this is for any of you, a third hauler was talked about. Who is this? We know it's Shenandoah Sanitation. But, and how did they know about the city's plan?
I feel like everyone knows that we're talking about garbage and recycling. Right, so I, as I said, in, one of the council members answered, Alex reached out to me in early December via email, asking if he could meet with us. At that time, I said that the council was really only interested in talking to Batten and Town and Country, so I just basically said, there's really no reason for me to talk. He did reach out again about six weeks later, and we met for about an hour in late January, and I'm assuming just from media and the fact that they have employees, but I had never heard, I've never met Alex, I'd never heard from anybody, didn't know that we had employees, just he reached out via email.
Okay. All right, council, we're moving on. This is for any of you. What will the city do with the residents that don't take care of the trash if this new proposal takes place? I feel like that's kind of.
I think just the, you're going to have the service, and we're going to do our best to get compliance and nuisance abatement.
And I think you've also talked about this next one, but we're reading everything that was submitted. Why can't they enforce the codes now?
Again, we do enforce the codes, it's just not super effective, and I think that as a resident, it's easy to feel like it's just something that we should do, but if people are willing to accept that it's a 90 to 120-day process, and that as taxpayers, you're okay with paying those bills, I think it's the council's position that we would choose ideally to minimize those costs and ask everybody to pay for garbage with an additional way of trying to get enforcement.
Okay.
This, yeah, Taylor does work, Taylor's our employee, he's working every day, and we do nuisance things. One of the things I will say that we're going to talk about in two weeks, I've had people reach out to me asking for the addresses. We don't have a document right now that are all the addresses, but I will say that our society is different on social media. If you think about the fact that most county sheriff's departments put mugshots on Facebook and have no problem doing it. We do have an option that I think people don't believe us. I've gotten two emails in the last couple of weeks that when I said, at this time, I'm not going to release the addresses, and the person said, what are you afraid that we're going to help you clean these people up? I don't know how people think that that's going to go. And so I do believe that it's a policy choice for the council to determine if we want to do a list, but I think it sort of is to the point where people don't believe us that we're working on it or that we have those properties. And we could, similar to the sheriff's department, who does some sort of public shaming by putting people's mugshots out on Facebook once a week, and it's on their websites, the council is going to talk about in two weeks that we may have Taylor publish on our website a weekly list, because I sent him out on January 31st, because we were going to have a meeting on February 3rd. I thought about putting those pictures in the council packet, and he came back after about an hour with 15 parcels, that it was a trailer and a truck used for black garbage bags, just a dozen to 30 garbage bags. It's not all junk. People are right, we have old vehicles, we have lots of things that are considered junk that you wouldn't be able to put in the carts, but there really are. And so, I don't know, I don't know if the council will be able to talk about that in two weeks, but I'm to the point where when people accuse us of making this stuff up and there, there really isn't any, then I guess we'll go to public shaming, and we can put the address and put pictures that, because Taylor goes out and takes pictures, and they're stamped with City of Red Oak and the date, and it says nuisance officer, and I guess if that's, you know, some of the, I don't know what kind of tactics we call it, but it is interesting to me, I've never worked for a county, and I always have this weird uncomfortableness that everybody's mugshot shows up on Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, and when I was on the other side of the state, and so is it really any different? But the council's going to talk about that on March 3rd, because I'm not going to decide to be the one to put it out there, I feel like that's a policy decision if we, you know, and if people make a certain type of open records request, we would certainly have to release it. But the way the questions are being asked right now, we don't have a list, for example, and so we don't have to verbally give things out, we have to give out documents, and so we're going to talk about that, and the council can decide as a policy decision where we want to go with public shaming.
Okay.
Right, but we don't put those out on the website right now.
Councilman Frydoff, this one is for you. Several years ago, the city tried to take care of rental properties by initiating an inspection requirement. It ended up penalizing the good property managers and did nothing to the bad ones. How is this different?
So yes, in the past, the city leadership was not very consistent or firm regarding that enforcement, and they did not follow up to make sure those codes were complied with. But now that we have restarted the inspection program, we do have a very stiff $500 penalty for not registering, and we are definitely taking greater steps to be sure landlords understand the fact that compliance is not an option. And if you are not aware, I'm not sure how long ago it was, we actually had a special meeting where we did invite the landlords for a Q and A with them as well, to go over the inspection program and let them offer up any concerns that they had or comments about the program itself. So it is back in action, and I feel like it's going to be a very good thing overall.
I'll add one thing. So we have a three-year cycle, just so people understand, like, you know, I've only been here for five months as of yesterday, and I can certainly say that there was a lax attitude amongst the staff, whether that came from the elected officials or from the staff, or a combination of the two, that's not really for me to judge. Sometimes my unpopularity comes from being willing to say that rules are rules, and if rules are foolish, I'm more than happy to come and talk to the council, I kiddingly call it the ordinance of the month club, because sometimes staff morphs away from enforcing because it doesn't really work. And we fail as employees to not come before the policymakers and say, hey, this really And we fail as employees to not come before the policymakers and say, "Hey, this really isn't working for us. Let's talk about if we should change it." And if they decide to change it, then we go and we have our marching orders. If they say, "Sorry that we've failed you," and they still want us to enforce it, then that's our job. And it's not always popular, but we don't make the rules. But what I can tell you is that we've taken different steps with the landlords, and we will do the same with garbage, and if they were to decide that, and we are doing the same for water. We have people with delinquent water bills in the amount of $3,000. That's a shame for all of us.
Water.
Well, here's the problem, okay? We have a tool in our toolbox that says, "If you don't fix your water lateral, we can come and fix it for you," because you're not going to just dupe us and say, "Sorry, you can't shut me off." But that's what they did before. They just said, "Well, we can't shut people off." And as I read in the code, not a new Lisa Carter rule, not a new this council rule, the rule's always been there that says, "We give you an order if you, because you have to have it in working order, and if you don't, we're going to come and fix it." We have fixed seven properties, and one of them was that $2,700 bill that's now $3,400. It's a difficult thing to tell someone that has a number of kids that, "We're not turning your water back on until you come in." But they ignored us for two and a half years. So, that's not fun, and it's not easy to say those things, but we have rules, and they have not been enforced well in the past. And that's not me trying to badmouth anybody in the past. And with regard to this landlord meeting that we had, landlords came in that were the good landlords, just like people here probably are not the people that don't have garbage. You probably all have garbage, and that's why you want to see Lynette and Kevin stay in business. You're not the problem. But we don't enforce the rules. And so, with the landlords, the good ones came in and said, "We're tired of being the ones that came in. We paid you our inspection fee, and you came and inspected it, and then those other guys, whoever that is in the pot of the bad landlords, didn't come in." Well, guess what? We sent out 300 letters, and we're down to 10 landlords that haven't come in. They were served by the police department with a letter that said, "You have 30 days or that $500 fine is coming." But that's not what happened in the past, and so, it's not easy to be difficult and to enforce those rules. But you, as citizens, deserve employees and policymakers who enforce them, because that's what we're trying to do. So, we really do want to enforce nuisance to the best that we can. We really do want to say, "You have to pay your water bill," and people have abused it. What we did this time, we just sent out shut-off notices. Landlords had the option to say, "I don't want to know when my tenant's delinquent." But remember when I told you we didn't put delinquent bills on the tax roll before? Well, we are, starting in May. And so, I said, "It's not fair for those landlords to have to pay those bills if we don't give them a warning." So, it took Suzie and Donna about three days to go in and turn off the "Don't Tell Me" landlord notice. It cost us more mail money, but Donna, who doesn't appreciate people who look at her and know that they're not going to pay their bill, she literally was like a kid shop in my office, happy that people were coming in, because there were landlords that all got the notice, and we put a thing in there that said, "You never got these notices before, but it's your tenants that you choose, and we need your help getting payment. Please help us, because if not, you're going to see it on your tax roll in May." The place was full today, and people saying, "Why'd you tell my landlord?" So, just like garbage and just like nuisance, all I can say is, like, we want to serve you as a community, and we want to do what's best, but we really are trying when it comes to rental inspections, when it comes to water payments, when it comes to garbage and nuisance. Like, we want to help Red Oak be better as a staff, and I think we all care about the way it looks. We hope that you do, and we're not just up here trying to be difficult. It is really about enforcement and treating people the same, and not saying that just because your service doesn't have the ability to shut it off, that you get free water. So, we're not in the business of giving free water. So, it's not easy to always be that way, but we are being that way, so hopefully you understand that.
Thank you. So, the rest of the questions in that section have been answered. We're going to move on. If the city were to sign a five-year contract with a hauler, how much money would be paid to them?
So, we just based it on the $26 per month. Obviously, we have not gotten a number from any of the haulers, but I think we've learned, I know for my house, I pay $26. Most people that have Batten or Town and Country pay 26 for garbage. So, for 2,400 houses, each being paid to the haulers at $26 for one year, that amount is $748,000. If we did a five-year contract, the revenue to those haulers, whoever gets it, if it was one single hauler, would be $3,744,000. So, when we talk about the fact that people think we're sort of wronging the haulers and things like that, we at least want people to understand that when we talk about perhaps some investment on their part to have to do some extra equipment, like those that use rear loaders and be able to put a tipper, I know that when Lynette had checked on a price, she said it was somewhere between 20 and $27,000. So, that is an expense to them, or if they were to contribute to carts, but it's also a guaranteed, if one hauler got it, a contract for $3.7 million.
Thank you. We are getting close. We're actually a little...
Does everybody want to answer the rest in a online version, or do we want to? Do you have, how many do you have left? This would be ones that turned in after.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Is everybody okay if we go ahead and keep going?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Is this a public comment time that we can...
But, and, and thank you for asking that. There won't be public comments here. You can attend the next city council meeting during that public comment section on their agenda and address things, but keep in mind, they can't respond to you there, because that's, that's the format. But come, yes.
Hold on. Tim would like to speak.
This wasn't just lip service when I say, "Call me and we'll have a cup of coffee." My phone number, my personal cellphone number is listed on the city website. All of our numbers are on there. Our email addresses are on there. You have an entire month, or well, essentially, if you say we have two meetings a month, there's 28 other days in that month when you have every right to call us, email us with any concern that you have. Obviously, I can't go out to coffee with every single person. I do have to work and take care of children and those sorts of things. But as much as within me, I would sincerely sit down with you and talk if you really had concerns for me any other day of the month. Again, it's, that's what we're here for. It's not just about on the nights of our council meetings where you can, you want to come in and state something, which, again, you have, you have that right, because we have allowed that right for you to do so. But you have access to us every other day of the week, essentially, you know, those of us that may or may not work, but again, within reason, we are willing, I believe, we're all willing to talk face-to-face, one with another.
That's what I was going to say. I think everybody's willing to do that. I would say, Sharon, Brian, Adam, John, are you all willing to do that too? And me as well?
I would.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. So, we are all willing to do that. Okay. Moving on. We have proof by petition of those against. How can you pressure that those not on it are automatically...
Presume.
Presume. Thank you. I'm sorry, reading other people's writing sometimes. How can you presume that those not on it are automatically for?
Well, that's a really good question, and, you know, that is one of my talking points. I've had my phone on, I've answered every single email, I've answered every single phone call. I literally have heard from 34 people personally, and a few of those were actually positive comments. You know, we've got the petitions with 800 and some names on it the first time, they went back out, and then they, they cleaned up the petition a little bit, there was 750 names on it. If you, if you do the math, that's a full 13% of our population. If you do it by households, that's 23% of our households. So, if you do the math, that's, you know, 89% of the population are in favor, and 67% of the households are in favor. That's, once again, unless you contact me, unless you voice your displeasure, I have nothing else to go on. And there is such a thing as asylum majority, and, and, you know, we were elected to, to represent people, and, and we were trusted to, to do our due diligence in this job. And that being said, people don't necessarily contact us on every single issue that they, that they know that comes before us, the ones that they're important to them, that they do, and just like you all that are vocal, vocally opposed to it, you know, I respect your opinion, and I hear what you're saying, but I also hear the people that aren't speaking as well.
All right. How come you want 99.4% of the people to suffer for the 0.6% that you are saying are the nuisance?
I'm sorry, Elaine, I didn't... I didn't get that, Elaine, I'm sorry.
How come you want 99.4% of the people to suffer for the 0.6% that you are saying are the nuisance?
I, I'm not really sure how to answer that question.
How did they come up with that figure? I mean, to me, that's an assumption. Yeah.
I think when I was at the February 3rd meeting, when I said that I sent Taylor out on the 31st, and I said he took 15 pictures, that doesn't mean that he spent the whole day going around town. And so, I feel like I've been quoted a couple of times when people are taking 15 houses divided by and saying that that's the number. So, I think, I wasn't saying that there's only 15 houses, that, you know, we have the, you don't have garbage service or you're a nuisance, but it's not 15, but I think that's where that comment comes from.
Well, didn't you say once in what his first, how many months of employment, he had 70 occurrences of junk and trash violations? 70, in four in court. So, that number is obviously going to fluctuate. You, to pull that out and say it's only 15 houses, and so, why are we punishing everybody else? Nobody, reality, nobody's getting punished. I know that it might feel like that because of all, honestly, the speculation and all of the false information and the allegations and accusations that are going around Facebook right now, it probably feels that way, but nothing could be further from the truth. Again, I reiterate the fact that nothing's been decided on. We have not made any decisions. There's been no vote, except for that to which we requested Lisa to begin gathering information for us. If you currently have trash, if this was something that the city proceeded with, well, that wouldn't change. You would continue paying for trash, like, that's, there's no punishment there. The punishment would come for those that don't choose to have that as a service at their house. That would be the, the ones, if you want to call it that, a punishment, but really it's not. That's just where that would come from. So, again, I, I don't look at it personally as a punishment, since I'm already paying for trash every week, where, I pay for it per month, obviously, but it comes every week, then it's not a punishment to me, because that, nothing changes in that regard. I will continue to pay for trash, just like I did before.
I think one thing that has not been asked is about choosing their hauler, and it is a logistic, it's just the way our system is, the easiest way would be to divide the town into quadrants that would, if, if we were to go with the two local haulers, let's say that, because that would be something that we would have to hand-enter every single one that is Batten, and every single one that is Town and Country. If we allowed people to choose, we would have to do every single household, we'd have to request a monthly report from each of the providers, and we would have to hand-enter every single month, because people move around a lot. And it would be literally weeks and weeks of, we just, there's no way we can do that. So, we are willing to look at dividing the town in half and allowing both to be able to have that, you know, have, actually, they'll both end up with more customers, each of them, they'll both end up making more money. If we put it out for an RFP, we don't have to take the lowest bid either, but it would also help us get more information, so we could put an agreement together. I guess I also want to say, do we have more questions, Elaine? We do. Okay. I will hold.
Okay. Thank you. Why does the city think that we, the public, that are not in favor of this, keep stating we are misinformed? It seems to me that if we don't agree with the city council, we are in the wrong.
I guess I've been saying it because of what I've been literally reading online. I'm not in all of the groups. I know there's an accusation out there that I control one of those Talk of the Town groups. I do not. I'm not even in it, and I'm thankful for that sometimes. But I have read a lot of, of what's being said online, and, and that's why I've been stating that from the beginning, that there is a lot of false information out there, because it is, a lot of it is speculation, or somebody's idea of what it might look like, or what it could look like. Those people, I'm telling you right now, that are saying those things have not had a conversation, at least with myself. I cannot speak for anyone else. So, if they're getting that information from someone else, I don't know who it is. All I know is what I read is not what actually the truth is, or things that we've talked about. A lot of the stuff I read, and I kind of raise my eyebrows, I'm like, "Where did that come from? Like, why on earth would we even do that? That doesn't make any sense. I don't understa-" like, but I will not, and I've said this before, I will not engage in any of it online. So, I'm not going to go in there and begin to try to dismantle any of those things on there, because I'm not going to get sucked into that. And I've watched what will happen if those that support this, I've watched what happens when they do, and it's no wonder that there's a lot of people that will not speak up in support of this, because they don't want to get dragged into the mud. And that's what will happen. So, that's from my perspective, what I've seen. I'm not going to say 100% of it isn't true. There might be parts of it that is. There might be pieces that they've pulled out of a conversation, or a comment, or something that we might have been brainstorming, but that doesn't make it fact. It doesn't make it what's going to happen or what we're going to decide to do. It, it just doesn't.
And that's actually why Lisa put a lot of time into putting that fact sheet together, as well as an entire page with access to the packets with information in it, to links to the interviews with KCSI, and to our YouTube channel, and she even put in there what part of the council meeting, what timeline to go to, to be able to watch that part, so...
Okay.
Let me just reiterate. I, I do not, I do not state anything is false information if I don't agree with it. It has nothing to do with whether or not I agree with you. If I see something that's not true, I'm going to call that out. It is nothing to do with whether or not you agree with me. I am happy to have conversations with those that disagree with me. There are those in this room that I have sat down and talked with that disagree with me, and I'm happy to do that, and I would never accuse that of them of providing false information if they're just there asking questions of me. I would not do that.
I can just give an example of two things that, when I would say, some things that seem like misinformation. When we had a meeting with somebody that was circulating the petition, they said that someone flagged them down in their street, and he described the person as elderly and somewhat disformed and, you know, in some way physically disabled, and that he said that he was flagged down to have the person sign the petition. And I said, respectfully, we were meeting at City Hall, I said, "What was the reason that they wanted to sign it?" And he said, "Well, because they can't get their..."
Attention, number 15 minutes before the line closes. 15 minutes before the line closes.
So, he said that they were going to, that he was, the person had asked to sign it, and he said that the person said that that was because they wouldn't be able to get the cart to the curb. And I had already published the document that said, "The city is not opposed to, as long as the haulers are willing to go up the driveway." So, that's an example of, we're not trying to be saying that people are doing that, but if the person who knows who's gotten that information would say to them, "But the cities and the hauler are willing to let you give us a doctor's note and come up the driveway." That feels, as a person receiving those information pieces, another information we see constantly, that it's going to cost everybody more. In the document, it said that when we spoke to the two haulers that are here right now in town, that we would not do this if it was going to cost anybody more than $26. And so, those were two examples of things that feels like what we would use as misinformation, where we've tried to get the information out, and then as people are going door-to-door and saying, "Do you want to sign this? Oh, I'm sorry, you won't be able to get it to the curb," or, "I'm sorry, it's going to cost you more." Those are specific things that we can say are fact-based on our side of the equation that don't really feel like they're saying to the person that wants to sign it, like, "You can sign it, and we know that it's a polarized pro and con issue," but it feels like if you're not saying, "Hey, on the city's website, they said they would address that," then maybe the person wouldn't have wanted to sign it, because there's that fear that if you are handicapped and can't get it to the road, that somehow your life is going is gonna be different. And if we can address it, it seems like that's a thing that we're checking off the boxes of, "We've addressed that and we hear you."
And another one, the city's trying to do is to make money so we can raise rates.
Right. People have talked about that it's our money grab, that we're gonna pay for things. The way fund accounting would work for the city is there would be a garbage fund if the collections of the garbage need to cover the cost that we would pay. So, it might be the hauler costs, and then if we did like a spring and fall cleanup. And so, it's not a perfect science, but the basis of the rate would be to cover our costs and maybe like a small amount to split with the billing costs because it's part of the bill. So, it's not gonna fund anything else.
Okay. In regards to abatement, wouldn't we need to ask an outside attorney about that as it is a conflict of interest, being the attorney makes money on this if we don't change it?
I think that they're saying that she would rather have a system or she gets to go to court. I think that's what they're trying to say.
Are they asking...
No, I think what they're saying is, is that it is her motivation to not tell us to just go on someone's property because she gets money if we go to court. I think that's a pretty big reach. I don't think that she enjoys coming to court in Red Oak, Iowa to sit and deal with nuisance people. So, I think any attorney... You could say that your attorney never settles your divorce because they just wanna make money. I mean, there can be attorneys like that, but we try to keep our costs down to whatever we can. We try to be efficient when we speak to Bree, and I've never gotten, you know, again, I haven't been here that long, but I don't get that impression from Bree Sorensen.
We're getting close. I'm gonna read this. I don't think that there's any reason to answer this, but it was submitted this evening because it's not something for you to answer, the way I read this. Can the city or heart... Well, city or, so, heart and soul committee work with the more elderly problem areas that you see as an issue and offer to help with cleanup days or help with hauling off trash or other items to clean up these areas? I feel like the city's answered their part on that. Heart and soul, that's not for you to speak on, so...
It should just be a liability issue if what we work is involved.
Well, I think that we're always gonna be committed to trying if we had even the idea that Sharon talked about, if we're gonna have a drop-off site or a curbside thing, like, you know, there's high school kids that we could say, "Hey, does anybody wanna raise your hand and help? Like, we'll do what we can."
And there's the landfill aversion group.
The landfill aversion group, which is a recycling committee.
Is there a program that offers assistance to those who cannot pay their water bills?
There is a... I don't know the name of it because in my other cities, we had electric utilities, so there's different monies, but there's a small program that people can reach out to the courthouse. But I believe the staff has talked about that there's only two or three people on a random occasion that qualify. So, overall, no.
When the city administrator talks to two of the garbage haulers, the city council member, a city council member should be there to listen to what is going on. This is more of a statement than a question, so... All right. These last two are very similar. I'm gonna read them both, and then we're... It's bedtime for me. Do you think the citizens of Red Oak elected you to take over private local businesses? Yes or no, please? Second question, relatable. What gives the city of Red Oak the right to take over local private businesses? They comply with their rules and regulations or they will be replaced by an out-of-town company?
You don't have to answer others. Well, first of all, I don't...